Thank you. Okay, that's going away. There we are. So on Wednesday nights, we have our socials, which is members only. And if you would like to join in with those, you can get the emails on the email list we send out. I'll link every, every week. Monthly meetings are in person only. Although this evening, we are going to try and record it. Susan is zooming as we speak and will just transfer. We're not making it a Zoom meeting. So she'll use this as the recording medium to then upload it to YouTube. January and February is because some people are afraid of driving attention. So they will do only or possibly YouTube or something, we're not sure yet. Then the monthly newsletter is found on our website. Next month is our annual general meeting when we do the reports and so forth, finances and everything. And we also deal with the board of directors. This is a big change from the way we used to do things. We used to elect a president, a vice president and so forth and so on. Now officially, what we do is we elect a board of directors. And then amongst the board of directors, they will decide who is going to be president and so forth. So you can see we have directors and then the positions they have been. In fact, in this case, of course, they were elected into them previously. And we have staggered the dates so that we don't have a whole executive changing over at the same time. I don't think there's anything else. So I will hand off to Roger, longtime R A S C member from many different centers and accomplished speaker, accomplished observer, astrophotographer. And he's got some really interesting things to tell us sort of from the historical kind of telescope.
Thank you. You said accomplished speaker?
You were a fallen star.
Yeah. You still say that?
It is.
Wow. So part of the problem with this of Zoom is, is I'm about to go ahead and unplug one and unplug mine in. Ah, it's not going to reach. This one. This one, this one, this one, this one, this one. You. Slide show, slide show, slide show, slide show. Okay. Try now. I could never do that. So actually, maybe you just start. Can you turn the volume down?
That's what I'm trying to do.
Sorry, of course, that's, that's obvious, isn't it? How's it working now? Oh, it's getting better. Okay, I think we can live with that. Okay, so, so tonight's presentation is on optics and telescopes. Because for a lot of us, we take, now I can't see any of them. We take these, these things called telescopes and we take them for granted. They are just almost like a black box that we, that we kind of like look through or use to take images. But I wanted to delve into these things a little bit deeper and and give you an idea of just, just what, some of the magic is going on behind these things. Okay. So I think like many people have, have a book or two that have changed their lives. You know, whether it be a, a book of faith or, or one that changed the world like Principia or on the origin of species. Maybe it was Lord of the Rings, like we were discussing at one end of the table this evening. Or in my case, it could be one by Patrick Moore. Because in the appendix of one of his books was a list of astronomy organizations around the world and their addresses. So I wrote off to the R A S C when, when I moved to Burlington from, from the UK as a child and wrote a letter off to there and and, and they said, we have meetings that you are welcome to attend. But I lived in Burlington. I was, you know, just at the beginning of high school at the time. I had no way to be able to, to get to any place in Toronto for a meeting. Even less be able to make it back again in the evening. But the only thing that they told me about, and they knew my address because they wrote me back, but they never checked to see where I lived, not realizing that the Hamilton Center was an awful lot closer to where I was than, than them. So, so so one time I did make a trip to the McLaughlin Planetarium in Toronto shortly after it opened. And, and you know, it was a school trip and, and they had a gift shop at the McLaughlin Planetarium. So while all the various teachers were off going ahead and making sure that everybody had their tickets and this and that, the other. I was in the gift shop having a good look around because I had a telescope at the time. I was twelve, when I was twelve years old. And, and so, so this place was as close to heaven as I figure I'm ever likely to guess. And, and you can see the book there. But if you want to actually have a look at this thing afterwards, I brought it with me. It's, it's an old and valued book and, and I shouldn't have been surprised what it mildly was when, when Rick was talking about this, the Fallen Stars. And he said, oh, you mean All About Telescopes by Sam Brown? I went, of course, Rick would know. So, so I, I didn't have enough money to pay for it at the time, but I did have my lunch money. So, so I skipped lunch and, and bought this. And I think, you know, over the, over the long time, it hasn't done me any harm skipping one lunch. And, and but the book was, was completely and totally invaluable. It is, it contains the sorts of things that, so many things that I just didn't know about astronomy. And one of them was, was how, was an introduction to optics and how that applies to telescopes. So I'm going to use this book tonight and some of the stuff with it along with other things to give you an idea of the sorts of eye opening things that, that I found in this book. And I hope that you will be hopefully maybe slightly entertained, but you might consider a bit of a brain dump. And for that, you have my apologies. So on page two for, for this one, you know, you find all of a sudden like everything's in feet and inches. So you have a look through it today and you go, wow, how on earth did anybody figure out what power of telescope it was when you've got an eyepiece with a focal length of one and three eighths of an inch and a telescope is forty eight inches in focal length? How on earth did you go ahead and do that as opposed to, you know, converting it now to metric? Which makes it an awful lot easier even to get in, in the ballpark. The book is full of all other anachronisms too. Like there's mention of asbestos when it comes to, to use of a Herschel prism. And, and the eyepiece solar filter, which it mentions, but fortunately doesn't say to put it, you know, between your eye and the eyepiece, at least it has just on the inside of, of the eyepiece where it's still prone to crack, but, but less chances of it. And so it mentions those. Well, one of the things that really caught my eye about, about this one, when I opened it up in, in the McLaughlin Planetarium, was the thing, you know, when it referred to telescopes like build and use and mirror, which is often homemade. Now, the telescope I had at the time was a, a four inch homemade telescope. It was four inches in diameter, not four and a quarter. It was a piece of porthole glass and, and I bought it from a family friend in, in Liverpool. And so it was handmade. It was on a German equatorial mount. And this day, this book was going to teach me all about these things. But have a look at some of these, these things here. You have a look at, at the guy there, he's got this giant telescope behind him. And this obviously is, is the clothing that you need to wear when you go out observing, you know, with the jacket and tie and a little pocket coat as well in there and, and all nicely dressed up. And that's the way you go observing. But check out the camera of the catastrophe telescope as well. And, and quite astonishing. Well, one of the things you'll find out in there is, is right on page two is, is the various types of, of, of the first types of telescopes that we run into. Like Galilean telescope that we know about, the Keplerian telescope, just an astronomical reflector. And the Gregorian. Now, the Gregorian was, was designed by James Gregory, but never actually built. Not by him anyway. And then the Newtonian reflector and various other stuff. So even on page two was more information about telescopes than I had, I had seen up to that point, despite the fact I had had one for two years. So back in the, so when I got this, this was, this was back in the late sixties, early seventies. But during that particular time, telescope making was common. For instance, when I joined the Hamilton Center in nineteen seventy, you know, they had several meetings a month. One not, not dissimilar to this, a monthly meeting where some of the speaker would come in, frequently a visiting professor or and, and they also had a discussion group for the on-chastral moment. And, and then they had, anything else that wasn't in there was a telescope making meeting. And everybody got together at, at one particular place and a guy had a workshop and that was for the telescope makers. It wasn't so much telescope making as just more like our social evenings on Zoom. And just go ahead and have a good chat about all sorts of things. But if you were making a telescope or like me had broken the leg on my tripod, it was, it was a place there where you could go ahead and get help in, in, in doing that, in, in getting that, that fixed and how to go ahead and, and use it. So so all the things that I found fairly quickly in there was things like basics, like, like star magnitudes. Because all I had was, was Patrick Moore's book that I borrowed from the library and a couple of others. Really didn't tell me very much about observing at all. Nice pictures that in there of the Orion Nebula that have been, and the horse head that have been taken by the two hundred inch and other stuff. But, but not about the nuts and bolts of observing. So this was my first introduction and it give you an idea of the, of the style of, of things that were, that were in the book. Packed full of, of really useful, basic information. One of the things that astonished me was, was here's a limit for the, for the three inch telescope, right? About magnitude eleven point five. And, and if you, if you double that, you could go up another couple of magnitudes. But if you double it again, you don't go ahead and go up to another magnitude, magnitude. So the limit was, was fourteen point five roughly for a twelve inch telescope under what it claimed was, you know, reasonably dark skies. Here's the other thing, right? Look at this, the naked eye limit in the city, magnitude five point five. Oh, how we wish that was the case today. Because now, now it's, it's down a couple of magnitudes. And in cities like, like Toronto, you might, you're lucky if you can see a single star in the sky, even if that is serious. The skies are so atrociously bright. It also showed the naked eye limit for the, for a two hundred inch telescope. And I thought, wow, wouldn't it be nice to actually look through a two hundred inch telescope? Until I met somebody who'd actually gone ahead and done that. And, and so, yeah, magnitude twenty and a bit. Now, the astonishing thing for me is, is magnitude twenty and a bit, that just sounds so out of the world, out of this world. And yet now from my backyard in, down by, by, on the Sun Orange River, with a twelve inch telescope, I can hit that. I've taken images of things on there and faintest thing in there has been just under twenty first magnitude. So little did I know at the time that, that I'd be able to hit the visible limit for the two hundred inch. Photographically, it's another, what, three magnitudes fainter than that. And I suspect that the, the limit now will be considerably better. The CCDs and CMOS devices have done wonderful things for us. I learned about eyepieces despite the fact I had three that are at my disposal. You know, as I could have a look at a couple of eyepieces, one of which might be a really wide field eyepiece. And you see a nice big view of things. And another one that might have a more restrictive view, but the same magnification. And, and you could see what the difference was. It showed about, about other eyepieces like a, a one inch eyepiece, like twenty five millimeter. And, and it was a more restricted field of view. And it told you about, you know, the differences between magnifications that you could get and codified the things for me in a, in a way that, that that was really cool. So we're going to talk now about, about lenses and basically the rules for how they work. And, and we're going to assume for the time being, for the purposes of the next few slides, that a lens is, is absolutely perfect. There's no quarter of an inch thick. We're going to go ahead and have a, have an object up there. And, and there are going to be two parts, one of which is we're going to want to know the focal length of this. In other words, you know, when you, when you have, when you point at the sun, how far away do you have to be before you, before you start a fire? And, and then you can, you can mark them all. So with that, we have the rules for positive lenses. And, and if you want to go ahead and design your own telescope or your own eyepieces, things like that, these things, these general rules are, are, are quite useful. So basically, you know, if you're aiming a beam of light through the center of the lens, it won't be deflected. It'll carry on just straight through if it goes right through the middle. If it's parallel to the, to the optical axis, it'll be bent, so it passes through the focal point. And, and if you, if you go ahead and, and point through the first focal length, it will come out parallel at the other end. So, so exactly the, the opposite of, of this. And with that, any two of those rays will tell you where the image will be formed. And you can perform that for either the, the top of the arrow or bottom of the arrow. And, and that's, that's how a positive lens works. Negative rules, the, the rules for negative lenses are very, very similar. A light passing through the center of it will be deviated, so it just goes straight through. If it's parallel to the axis, after it's passed through the lens, it will appear to come from here. So it gets spread out and, and, and heads off in that way. And, and again, it's, it's directed towards the rear focal point, it'll come out parallel. In this particular case, we end up with, with a a, an image that's formed, but it's a virtual image. If you were stood looking at it through, through, through this side, you'll see that the object that you're looking at is smaller. So it doesn't work particularly well as a magnifying glass. Rules for positive mirrors are very, very similar again and a light ray. But in this particular case, we deal with something called the center of curvature, which is different than the focal point. So if, if this was a force in the sphere, this would be right in the middle of it. And the focal point is halfway between the two. So for, for light that's going through. So again, you can, you can read these, these things as, as, almost as well as I can, particularly if you're at the back of the room. I can read them a little bit better. But again, you know, deviation and you can figure out exactly where the image is going to, going to end up. And again, the rules for negative mirrors. So with these, with these basically, you know, three sets of rules, slightly modified for the four different variations. But you can go ahead and start designing properly your own lenses and how well they will do. So, you know, you can take your, your telescope that's, that's got a like in the back of a standard Newtonian reflector. And, and with the various lenses, you can figure out where the light path is going to go to get there, what to examine with it, all sorts of things. And, and if you decide to go ahead and build your own telescope, it's this sort of thing that, that becomes quite useful. So however, one of the things, even if you never decide to go ahead and build your own telescope, it gives you an idea, knowing a little bit about how lenses work and how, how a Barlow lens works. So we've got a really nice image here that shows an eyepiece that's being used to examine the image. So it's basically, eyepiece is a, a very fancy magnifying glass. And, and, and so you use an eyepiece to, to examine the image that's formed. If you want a little bit more magnification though, you could stick a Barlow lens in here. Now, the Barlow lens looks like, in this particular case, a standard negative lens. And when you go ahead and you put that in the way, you actually extend the focal out. So rather than meeting at this particular point, it meets out here. When it does that, you're essentially making the entire system believe that the focal length is an awful lot longer. So out here as opposed to where it was. And with a longer focal length image, a longer focal length, you get a bigger image. And so you can, you can go ahead and examine it. So a, a Barlow lens will essentially move the image outwards. So if you're having a little difficulty getting something to focus, like you're trying to take a photograph through, oh, I don't know, what is the, the person's solar telescopes? You know, the H Alpha things and you're, it's, and the, the image that's formed is just maybe right at the very top of the eyepiece barrel. You can't get a camera into that particular spot. If you take the, the Barlow lens out of a Barlow lens and just kind of like drop it into the, into the eyepiece tube there, you then go ahead and get exactly this situation. And, and you can actually go ahead and, and use your camera properly. Focal reducers do exactly the opposite. Focal reducer in this particular case will, will work by going ahead and creating a steeper angle. So it makes it seem as if the objective is here, again, reducing the focal length. And you end up then with, with something smaller. The focal reducer's field flatteners, like the single pieces that, that you have there, are designed for specific spacing typically between, between the lens and the focal point. And outside of that, they won't properly focus. But we'll get to a bit more about that in, in just a few minutes. There are problems with lenses though. And, and in this particular case, Sam Brown noticed, noted that a lens resembles a prism in a considerable way. So that you end up with, because a prism ends up, you know, light, red light is deflected, refracted the least and blue light the most. And says that with, with a single lens in there, you get a blue focus and a red focus. What he doesn't say is, is of course, that the blue focus, with it being a slightly shorter focal length, is going to go ahead and, and be slightly smaller, a bit more intense. Anyway, so this is the, the, the simple thing with, with, with the color of lenses. Another problem with, with, with lenses, and in this case also with, with mirrors, is that you can get something called spherical aberration. And, and that just basically means that the light from the edges of, of, of a lens will focus at a different place than the ones that are going straight through the middle. So they could come from the exact same direction, the same star. And the ones at the outside will focus beforehand. If they do that, it's actually under corrected. One of the things that Sam doesn't tell you, of course, then is, is that you need a special shape of the, of the lens. And in checking this out, it turns out to be a parabola. And, and so people who are used to building mirrors and things like that will, will recognize that particular shape. But we'll also get to that. Lateral color is caused by, by what can happen when you get things that are coming from different directions. So around, so pointed slightly so over the field of view is that at times the, depending upon how far off it's, it's coming, the red light and the blue light will be focused at slightly different directions. And you will get color fringes on the outside, getting worse towards the outside of the field. So so is there a solution to this sort of thing? The answer is yes. You can have, build what is called an acromat. Now, speak a little bit about the history of acromats in just a couple of minutes. But for the time being, what you need is you need two different types of, of glass to do it. In this particular case, you have crown glass at the front and flint glass at the back. Flint glass actually contains like bits of, bits of flint, which is why it's called that. It bends light differently than, than crown glass does. It's also a little bit softer than the regular glass, which is why normally you'll find the crown glass is the one that's facing outwards towards the, towards that because it's less prone to damage that, in that way. Anyway, it turns out that when you go ahead and do this, if you design it properly, you can then, you've got two elements in there and you can bring two types of light, two wavelengths of light to a really nice sharp focus, but not all of them. As, as the diagram shows here, you can get the, say, the red and the blue coming to, coming to focus there, but not the green. And that's because the, the, the way that it goes ahead and, and focuses is, is that you'll get the red light and the blue light that are focusing, but not the green. So an acromat works very nicely, huge, a huge advance over, over a regular, uh, single lenses. And that's so base, that's how basically they work. Of course, the, the term apocromat or, or an apple lens is slightly different because it says, you know, if, if I got two lenses and I can have two colors meet, why can't I have three lenses and have three colors meet? Surely that's possible. And it is. The, the problem is however with it is that you not only need three different types, three lenses, but you need three different types of glass in there as well. And they have to be sufficiently different. And so we've got a flint glass that, that was, that was used, you know, it's got a regular crown glass. And, and when the first one was designed, they had to use a third type of glass, which was extremely expensive, quite soft, very prone to having ripples in the middle of it. And although it worked, the images weren't particularly good. Plus with three lenses in there, all the surfaces of which have to be properly shaped to the, to the right size and computed out, there was no mean feat to go ahead and build one of these things. And it's one of the reasons why now, even today, apocromats are, are quite expensive to go ahead and do it. In, in this particular case, in the diagram here, it says we can, well, we can solve for it in, in the, in the near infrared and the red and the blue. And, and you know, so if you're doing survey work, this works out quite nicely. But they are not easy to build. We also hear things now about ED types of glass or, or a semi-apple. And, and in this particular case, with the, with the, with ED glass, with the, with the extra high dispersion types of glasses, the amount of secondary spectrum you get with, with this type of glass is actually smaller than what you would normally get with, say, oh, a crown glass. So the spectrum that you get is an awful lot smaller. So you slap on something in here and, and say, oh, a filter, for instance, a, a fringe killer or a minus violet filter that, that I think it was Telview that came up with. And if you knock just a little bit of, of that off, you can get really very, very good optics through there with very little color. And, and that's what you can do with, with a semi-apple or an ED. The, the history of these things. Isaac Newton, smart guy, was brilliant with mathematics and almost anything that relied on, on that. But he wasn't the world's greatest experimenter. And so he said, knew about, about the dispersion of, of light, knew that different materials seemed to, seemed to go ahead and bend light slightly differently. So he tried to actually to make in sixteen sixty six, a, an acromat lens. The problem was, was that he got a couple of lenses that were empty. So just blown glass that was, that was in there and put them together and filled them with, with, with a couple of different liquids to see if that would work, thinking that was easier than going ahead and, and designing lenses of different things. The problem is that the, the two solutions he used actually had almost identical index of refraction. In other words, they bent light in a, almost exactly the same way. And so out of this one single experiment that he failed at, he said these things were impossible. Such was his status in the field that it was like almost seventy, seventy years later before somebody said, well, you know, geez, maybe he, maybe he was wrong, like whisper it quietly. Other people have said, well, yeah, I'm not sure that Isaac there was correct. There were rumors on the, on the European continent that he'd gone ahead and done it. But the, of, of, of this was, that Newton was wrong. It was this guy, a fellow called Chester Moore Hall, and he made the first acromat. He was an amateur astronomer and a lawyer and, and he made the very first one. The way that he did it was he went ahead and designed the front and the back. He said crown glass and flint glass, so he got that right. And so he got two lens makers to go ahead and make the two lenses that he made because he wanted to keep this a secret all to himself. He was not interested, I guess, in making money or anything all like that. He wanted the finest telescope that was available at the time and this was the way to go ahead and do it. So he sent the, the request off for these things. What he didn't count on was that the two opticians that he sent, the, the specs for these, his lenses to, were going to go ahead and subcontract the work. And they chose the same guy. And they chose the same guy. And that same guy, a fellow called John Dolan, goes, geez, look at this. And noticed when he went ahead and put the lenses together, that there was far less color fringing than there was. But, you know, a customer is a customer and he filed them up. And and John Dolan didn't do anything more until the early seventeen fifties, when he decides. You know. Chester Moore is not doing anything with this, he's got like the finest telescope arguably on the planet. I could make myself an absolute fortune if I can make these and he tries to patent it. The patent is granted in seventeen fifty eight over the massive protestations. He took out a lawyer, did did John Dolan and uh but the judge um ruled in favor of uh Mr. Dolan. Because Chester Moore Hall just sat on his invention. He did not describe it, he did not um submit any of the observations that that he made with that. He basically ignored the rest of the planet and 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 did it. By going ahead and patenting it, it meant that John Dolan might get the rights to go ahead and do it, but but the. But the technique will be will be out in the open, people could go ahead and do it. And so the judge granted um John Dolan the patent for it, which I guess in some ways was was reasonably fair. Because he got ahead and built the thing in the first place. His son Peter Dolan creates the first apocromat in seventeen sixty three. So um John Dolan has has been sat on on the acromat for a very long time. But it takes a considerable amount of time and his son and an increase in the technology of glassmaking. Before the first apocromat can be made in seventeen sixty three. Of course, you can avoid all of this um if you use mirrors. So there are some built in problems with lenses and mirrors. And there are sort of like five different aberrations that can be caused in these things. Uh most people know, say, about spherical aberration, we talked a little about it beforehand. Where the outside edges, if you like, of your lens will focus at a different point than the than the light going through the middle of it. And when you go ahead and you do this, you end up with a with a beam shape that 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 is kind of like this. That's spherical aberration, is what the Hubble Space Telescope would have done. And any any amateur telescope maker um would have been able to put it through the test and go, yeah, I ain't got a problem with it. Another problem is coma, and something else you will hear about, and this is where where the light kind of like gets spread out um off axis. Uh and in this particular case, in the shape of a comet or a coma, uh and and it goes ahead and then blurs. The further off axis you go, the worse it gets. Astigmatism, many of us have eyes that are asti- that are astigmatic. Uh and and that's basically where you don't, the light doesn't fall into a nice pinpoint, um as we would all like it to do. Um but it's blurred a little because it makes an oval shape. And and that's another one of the problems if you don't design your optical system particularly well. Field flattening, a lot of this stuff is that people are going, oh, yeah. And I have to buy field flatteners and all sorts of things to get away with it. And this is is indeed because lenses won't necessarily go ahead and and focus to a flat plane. Um it'll be curved a little and and so, you know, if you try to examine it, yeah, you know, it looks blurry around the edges and only nice and sharp in the middle. And so field curvature. And another problem that you get with lenses, even if you've gone ahead and solved all of those things, you could still end up with 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 a lens. Um that'll give a pinpoint cushion or barrel shape or even if it's um truly bad um uh shape. Now, the nice thing about about these is is you can solve these things. Uh I've no doubt that Pixinsight has got something in that that will go ahead and 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 fix this, as long as it's nice and sharp. So. Mirrors versus lenses, so mirrors are like obviously so much better because you can support them from underneath. Like the biggest telescope refractor that was in use was the forty inch um out in the in Wisconsin. Um and still the biggest one that actually made astronomical observations. There was one that was made bigger, it was on display at the Paris Exhibition sometime in the eighteen nineties, and it was forty nine point one inches across. Um but otherwise, you know, so so a bit more than than a meter. And the 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 thing is, you can only support a mirror around its its outside, they will sag. And 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 then you have all sorts of issues with them. And because you're going to be moving around the sky, you can't build in. An anti-sag, if you like, by making it permanently wedge-shaped, um you can't do that because they're going to be moving all over the sky. The nice thing about mirrors, you can support them from underneath. You only have to grind one surface and and if you ever ground a mirror. Uh the the thought of having to turn around once I've got that perfect and do the other side without scratching the front. Um is um is a huge advantage. Uh the glass also doesn't have to be perfect all the way through. My four inch telescope mirror was made of porthole glass. Um not exactly the the best, uh you just have to let in light, that's really all they cared about, not the image that that came through it. Um and and the great thing is, right, no chromatic aberration. Um. It's um you you don't have to worry about any of these things, but. There ain't no such thing as a free lunch. Thank you, Robert Heinlein. The big problem with mirrors is there is almost always um central obstruction. Uh and the support of the central obstruction. And and so you can see what happens here is is without a central obstruction, right, you get get these nice. Um airy rings, for for those of you who observed on beautifully um steady night. Uh can actually see a high power of the stars, if there's 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 rings around them. And it's called an airy disk. Uh with a twenty percent obstruction, you push more light into the outer rings. So um so it's not perfectly bright in the middle and with a thirty three percent, but the larger the obstruction, the 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 worse it gets. Which is for mirror type of uh telescopes um is is a problem. How's it work? Well, you can have a look on these things with without an obstruction, right? You've got these really nice sharp images there here. And with a central obstruction, it looks it looks a little fuzzy, like the contrast isn't there. And in particular, on on the moon, you can see this, you know, you've got some some nice detail in there. It's it's a contrasty image, whereas it's almost like you're looking through a bit of a fog. Uh with with a twenty percent obstruction and with a thirty three percent, um it's it's actually far worse. So you want to keep the obstruction with a mirror down to as small as possible. If you have um a spider in a way, holding holding it up as opposed to, say, mounting the corrector on on a piece of optical glass. Um you also get diffraction spikes. Now, diffraction spikes actually be used to be quite useful in in focusing. Once, you know, the first CCDs, people started playing with the first CCDs and um and digital cameras. Uh because you can get a really nice bright star massively overexpose it and you see the diffraction spikes. And the instant that those diffraction spikes were as small as possible, then you're in focus. So the trick was to get them that way. It worked so well, you used to put strings across the front of the aperture of their SCTs deliberately to try and cause. Um this sort of pattern on there, so it gave them something to something to focus on. Um I'm was guilty of that on more than one occasion. Nowadays, of course, we use bottleneck masks because that tells us in which direction we have to go ahead and move the focus and and when to stop moving. So this is this is the the issue uh that we have with with mirrors that the that the lenses um don't have. Um so a central obstruction like in a in a Schmidt-Cassagrain or a Ritchie-Cretier or or even a simple Newtonian. Goes ahead and puts more energy into the outer rings of the of the area disk. And 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 Sam goes ahead and happily gives uh the fact that uh. Uh the linear diameters and angular diameters of stars and things like that, and you can actually have a good play with how large a. Uh telescope you need to go ahead and and to make sure that everything is is um all nicely resolved. So he talks about resolution and the central obstruction will go ahead and get in the way of of that. So. We're going to start talking in now about all the various shapes of of mirrors and things like that. So you're going to hear things like um like it's a spherical mirror, you're going to hear hear other things about it's a parabola. Or or you require a type of hyperbola, these are all conic sections, which perhaps some some of you. Uh hopefully more than 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 a couple um might recognize from high school mathematics. But in this particular case, what we have is is we have a section of 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 things here that have all got roughly uh the same focal length. In which case, you know, we have we have a circle, um which when you're coming to optics is the easiest thing to go ahead and make. Um if you're if you're if you're not careful and 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 you make it uh make the outside of it too flat. You may end up with with an oblate ellipse um or a prolate eclipse. Uh but what you really want if you're building a standard Newtonian is you want this shape here of parabola. Uh because all of the on-axis rays will come to point. The ones that are off-axis, they don't, but if you're looking straight through, um that's that's what you get on the hyperbola is this. Now, there's a whole family of curves, right, between between the parabola and essentially flat, they're all called hyperbolas. And and so consequently, they all have different equations, they all can do different things. And if you're going to be playing around with these things, um you first make something that's a section of a sphere and then you go ahead and and. Polish it enough so it's so it's not a sphere. And the differences between these curves are sort of like a hundredth of a millimeter, so not very much at all. Uh so so the tolerances are really fine between the parabola that you want, the at the uh. The circle that that you've got and all of the various things that go along there. And if you actually want an ellipse of one of these two types, then you have to be really careful about like which one have you got? And and the same goes with the hyperbola, you've got to be really careful, they're a lot more difficult to make. Than than a standard circle or even the parabola of which there's really only one shape. So. To try and get through all of the various things that that are there, people over the years have come up with with multiple different types of telescopes. Uh we can see uh the refractors, right, the the dioptrics, uh like non-acromats, right? The the sort of thing that Galileo had and the Kepler um improved upon because with a positive lens, you can see a wider field of view. The acromats, the the dialytic refractor, and and I actually have to look this one up, um because Sam does not. Um cover this, the dialytic refractor is exactly like an acromat, but there's a space between the two lenses. And and that space can actually be considerable. Um it could be as something as as small as just a small shim, it could be um uh you know, a good few millimeters. It could be a couple of centimeters, um but but that's a dialytic refractor. This is the apocromat which we had, the binoculars, which are basically like two telescopes bolted together. Uh the awkward glasses is is two Galilean telescopes that are pointed together because you can make them smaller. A fellow that that I was talking to uh uh about these different types of telescopes many years ago. Insisted that I go ahead and put in the a a couple of these things in, including, he said, the copy scope. Because he said the copy scope is where you take the lens uh from photocopier, my son throws out a photocopier, there's a lens in there. And it can actually be a pretty nice lens, so you can take that out and put in the tube and make yourself a decent little telescope. Um there was the aerial telescope, right, you remember those from, you know, the sixteen hundreds that appeared to be um like. Dozens of meters long and had to be hung from holes so that you could go ahead and look through them. And then there's the the super acromat, which has four lenses, not just three like the apocromat. A few of those have been made, they're insanely expensive. Um mostly they've been made for camera makers uh or for Hollywood where they demand absolute perfection. We have the different types of reflectors, the catoptics, right, the Newtonian, it's 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 cousin, if you like, the Dobsonian telescope. The Cassagrain telescopes, right, there's three different types of those, the Doll Kirkham, which actually uses a um. Uh one of the the lenses is is a parabola and the other is actually an ellipse. Uh to try and 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 get the uh the focus at the back. The Naismith reflector, uh where you actually go ahead, it's exactly like the Cassagrain. But there is almost like a Newtonian diagonal that bends the light out to the side. You don't perforate the 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 primary lens, you know, there's a big hole through it. And typically, what what you do with that, you send the light out through the uh through the uh either uh the altitude axis. Or the declination axis, which allows you to be able to bolt big cameras onto the side of these things. And and you can put an awful lot of weight in there, it's not hanging from your telescope tube. Uh there are other different types as well, the Gorian telescopes and and a couple of others, a large liquid mirror, for instance. That was made by rotating the ball of mercury and and it was one of those in uh out in B C. Uh but it is uh uh no longer um in in use, which is a shame. Uh the Schiefspiegler, which consists of tilted optics um and can have two or three uh mirrors in there. And 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 a couple of others, pretty arcane. Catedrion optics, which is which is then a mix between one that uses um lenses. And and one that uses mirrors. Um again, catedrion optic dialyte, so you can you can go ahead and make sure the correctors are well spaced apart. We have these things like Klebsov-Cassagrain, uh which is uh like the ones made by Dixon. Um and and multiple different types, the Maxusall, uh and and its variation. Uh Schmidt camera, the first Schmidt camera was made, it actually put a corrector at the center of curvature. And at the focal plane, it was nicely curved, but that's okay, you can curve film. God do that so much with glass plates, you certainly have extreme difficulty doing it with with CCDs. But with film, you can go ahead and cut out a nice circle and and put it in there and it worked really, really nicely. Um but the Schmidt-Newtonian, which is its cousin, and even the Schmidt uh Cassagrain as well in there. And you can have a modified Doll Kirkham and 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 a few other, all kinds of different types. So let's have a look at um at uh at some of the uh reflectors. Um this is, if you like, a a standard uh type of uh of uh of Cassagrain type of reflector, in this particular case, a Ritchie-Cretier. And in the Ritchie-Cretier, you have you have a hyperbolic primary. You have a hyperbolic secondary, so remember, these are shapes that are actually really difficult to make precisely. You really have to know what you're doing, you have to test them properly and and consequently, until relatively recently, they were insanely expensive. But worth it. Uh you could get tilted mirror uh telescopes where where you don't have the central obstruction. Because that robs you of 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 contrast in there, so you'd love to be able to have something that that has no problem with color. And doesn't have a central obstruction, so people have tried these things with. Uh and and some of them work really nicely, but again, they're not the cheapest things on on the planet. And and then even here, we have we have a mixture of one where um the the light is bent over a very long distance and it's got. Two lenses down there and and they are tilted with respect to each other to try and get rid of the uh. Uh of of the issues caused by tilting the components. So nice thing is no central obstruction, but but there's a number of things that you have to give up. We have the catedrion optics. Um. So in this particular case, here's the the Klebsov-Cassagrain, right, this is the uh the one that Kevin has Kevin has one. Um I have a a small four inch one and and in this particular case, these things are really cool because as the light comes in, it will bounce off the primary. It will pass through a secondary. It will pass through another lens in there, the back of which is illuminated. So the light actually makes a double pass through two elements of glass and the curved surface of the back. And you end up going ahead with that. The advantage this has over a Maxusall is is you've got much smaller optics that you can play with. You don't have to worry about a nice big thick, heavy piece of glass at the front. And 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 a nice big thick piece of optical glass like that ain't cheap because it's got to be perfectly clear. Um so. Uh so the the Klebsov's, when it came out, was was really nice. The problem is you do have a secondary and so you need a secondary holder. So this thing has a secondary as well, but you don't have diffraction spikes with it because it doesn't have the the spider in the way. Ah. Sorry about that, did that on. I don't believe what I've just done. Ha, ha, you don't get off that easily. Now, where was I? Yeah, let's start there and then I'll click again and try not to do the same stupid thing. Loading, loading, loading. Camera. Okay. Telescope types, click. Reflectors, catedrions, okay, so. Um the reason I hadn't mentioned the Schmidt-Cassagrain yet was because I wanted to dive just a little bit deeper into into the way that these things work. And 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 this is a standard Schmidt-Cassagrain. At the SCT, which is um which has done wonders for for amateur astronomy. And the way that these things work is they. And the way that these things work is they've got a very specially shaped piece of glass at the front. Uh, it's very specially shaped and very difficult to do unless um, you are a California amateur back in the nineteen sixties. And and you make one of these things by vacuum forming the glass. So it's really nice and thin. It will bend. And so if you go ahead and you put it in a nice little chamber with a with a support on it and suck the air out from underneath it, it'll push that glass down. You can grind it into either a flat or spherical shape, which is easy to do. And then you let the vacuum go, and it bounces back and has this really odd shape. So for for the first time, you can go ahead then with with this and and mass produce these things, which Celestron did. Um, so uh by going ahead then and putting a a standard reflector back there, you could make a spherical primary, a spherical secondary. But these are easy to make. These this is what um amateur telescope makers cut their teeth on on going and do this. And this bizarre shaped piece of glass, well, that's that's the top part. That's all you need. And that was the standard S C T um until two thousand and some odd, thereabouts, when when Meade came along and 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 produced what they call their R C X for Ritchie-Cretian, because they wanted the uh because Ritchie-Cretian's had an excellent reputation for being really nice and sharp and being the telescope that everybody wanted. Um, and and so what they did uh was that they went ahead and made a very special shaped piece of glass that was at the front and and a hyperbola. But this remained um a spherical mirror. And and so um this piece of glass now tricks the 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 lightways coming through into thinking that this is a hyperbola, so it pre-bends the light, if you like. And and it worked actually really, really nicely. They patented it. Celestron, of course, had to come up with 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 something else. And this is how, upside down, you can read this. Um, it was the Edge H D. So they went ahead and said, we're going to keep everything the same. We're going to have a spherical primary. We're going to have a spherical secondary. We're going to leave our our um corrector plate alone. And we're going to get this really special piece of glass, and we're going to stick it somewhere inside the tube. Now, depending upon the size of thing you want, and this is for the nine point two five, is is that uh the C fourteen is is up around here. And and um uh is is that this goes ahead, corrects a number of different errors. Like we'll see in just a second. So. So in this particular case, we have a classic S C T, and and this is called a spot diagram. So so if you take a a a a a spot on on there, uh like an array, if you like, of 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 laser light that are going straight through these things. When it comes out, this is the kind of shape that that it will end up being, spot diagrams. And a classic S C T will have a really nice, sharp spot in the middle, um but the coma gets more archery. So the twenty millimeters away from the optical axis, um there's not much of a star left there. Meade, uh R C X, or what they had to later call um Advanced Coma Free Telescope, because a couple of companies like um R C O S and and Optical Guidance Systems went ahead and sued Meade for saying that it was like a Ritchie-Cretian, because it wasn't. A Ritchie-Cretian has a has a hyperbola primary, a hyperbola secondary. And your telescope doesn't have that, it can't be a Ritchie-Cretian. And and they won. So Meade then had to call it its A C F or Advanced Coma Free. You'll notice that in this particular case, that the center spot is actually sharper than the original one, including right up to here, like it's it's a it's a circle. So although these are these are spread out, they're an awful lot easier than than this mess up here. And then along comes Celestron and said, well, we've got like another four optical surfaces that we can go ahead and use to correct. And and this is what they did. And so you can see the performances to why people love the Edge H D and why it's so it's so desirable to have one of these things versus a classic S C T. You can see that the stars remain really basically nice and sharp right through to twenty millimeters off the uh there. That's a circle. It's forty millimeters in diameter, right? So a really lovely thing. Um. There is, however, correctors that you can get from a wonderful company called Starisona, who do wonders things with optics. And and they've been making um correctors uh for Schmidt-Cassagrain for a considerable amount of time. And and with the onset of computers, uh and you could go ahead and and check for all sorts of things. And they came up with uh with with this particular type of one of these things. And you can see, you know, here's the here's the, for instance, as they published, this is a C fourteen, Celestron fourteen, standard one S C T. And you can see what it does with the with the central spot right on the axis. It's considerably sharper, even right in the middle, than than even a standard um S C T, much smaller. And then like twenty-one millimeters off axis, look at the size of 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 that star. It's a slightly odd shape, but it's really nice and nice and sharp. And they sell these correctors. So even if you have uh an old S C T like that, you can get Edge H D-like performance by going ahead and adding one of one of their correctors. So no need to give up hope. And now, obviously, these are specially shaped, but but they are really uh they're they're reasonably expensive. Um, so they make a really large one that will fit on the back of a of a fourteen inch. Uh, or they make slightly smaller ones that will fit in a two-inch barrel that are fine for for um eight inch, um ten inch, um nine and a half, uh eleven inch, or even my my twelve inch, which is which is what I've got. They are like all focal reducers and field flatteners, because not only does it go ahead and produce this thing instead of F ten, uh like it is, um it knocks it down to F six point three. So it's a focal reducer and a field flattener, because the field is nice and flat. And it's gone ahead and produced really nice correction in there as well. Um, so place in Montreal will sell you the two-inch version of that for about six hundred bucks. So you don't want it necessarily for an eight-inch telescope. But if you've got a got got an older uh version of the uh the standard S C T, um this thing will give it spectacular new life. Uh, and and you can even use it with uh with some Bino viewers. So. And now, we've talked about some telescopes, and I just want to want to blow your mind. This is what's being built in Chile. This is the um large telescope, like thirty-nine meter mirror across. It's um astigmatic, so it doesn't suffer from from any of the various aberrations that we've got. Because they have a primary mirror, they have a secondary mirror, they have a tertiary mirror that's that's perforated, and another one up here. They will use this one there, because they're going to fire lasers into the sky to excite sodium atoms sixty or seventy uh or eighty kilometers above the surface, so they can see the wave deformation of the light that's coming through and 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 correct for it using a highly flexible mirror like this one and 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 adaptive optics. And then bend it down to a flat mirror there, and then right out to the Naismith focus, but the size and science instrument platform there, where you can put some honking big um cameras and and instruments. And and this is what about one point two billion dollars get you uh at the at the moment. Which I I should add is a little bit less than than what you would win if you won one of the Powerball lotteries in the United States. Um, but that's just for the telescope. You then need a dome and things like that to put it on. Uh, so anyway, so this is, look, even the secondary mirror, four point two meters in diameter. Um, the reason, it was originally supposed to be forty-two meters across. But in this case, they dropped it down to thirty-two, sorry, to thirty-nine, um because this secondary had to be uh about five meters across. And there aren't that many people who can properly figure a five-meter diameter, a single piece of of glass, whereas there are quite a few that can do a mirror of that size. And so that's what they did. This is the European Space Agency. So this is. Yeah, absolutely, being being built in Chile. Uh, when I was drove past it in was drove past the site in twenty sixteen, they'd essentially taken the top off the mountain and flattened it, because, you know, plus, of course, Chile doesn't have enough mountains, so they went ahead, not that far from Paranormal. And as you're driving past on the road down to the Pacific, you can actually look up a little. And there's this this truncated mountain. Um, and now there's a there's a big structure. There's a big structure on. But anyway, in case you're wondering, like, telescopes, optics, how do you go ahead and design something like this? Well, this is now uh the state of the art when it comes to the uh when it comes to the professionals. So. I showed you tonight some some basic optics, the things you can do, like the the rules dealing with um 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 positive lenses, learning negative lenses and their mirror equivalents. I showed you some of the issues that 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 lenses and mirrors both have, ones that are common to 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 lenses only, like the like the coloration or the uh or the central obstruction that uh that that can ruin a really good reflecting telescope. We had a look at some different telescope designs, a quick look at S C Ts, so that you can see the differences between them and 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 what you can do to to go ahead and 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 the differences between them. And and with that, I thank you for your patience. Um, sure.
As you see, um, in the
Yes. Yeah, well, you have a look at a zoom lens, right? There's no difference. You've got multiple things, and they're moving around while while they're in there. Um, so yeah, people will try to go ahead and 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 do more. I'm beginning to think that some of them uh are are uh more marketing than than that, um because because you need one surface to get rid of each of the aberrations. So if you want to get rid of uh of um uh of of spherical aberration, you need to make sure, if it's a lens, you need to make sure that both of them are are paraboloids, otherwise it doesn't work. You need another lens in there to get rid of chromatic aberrations, so so there's two. You might need an apocromat, there's three. But while you're doing that, you can go ahead and also get rid of things like astigmatism that may be there. And and it may suffer the the shape that you go ahead and design in these things to try and make them affordable might mean that your uh your lens is um is a little bit um astigmatic. So it's it's an oval shape. Um, and and so you need to add another lens to try and and get rid of that, like like we do with with our eyeglasses. Um, having it slightly astigmatic isn't isn't a bad thing. For instance, the Ritchie-Cretian suffers from uh design suffers from, doesn't suffer from coma. It it suffers from astigmatism. And so inside of focus and outside of focus, the stars are are all are are like like they're they're ovals. And even right at the edges, uh they're 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 not coma shaped as we're used to seeing. They are small ovals. And and the problem, if you have one of these things, and and some guy who's only used to S C Ts uh has a look through and goes, well, there's a problem with your collimation and starts messing with it. And and so you don't want to do that with an with an R C. The other great thing about R Cs, because they are, is because if it's if the star is an oval shape, it's very easy to determine the exact center of that. Not so difficult when you've got this comatic thing that seems to 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 go off into into infinity. So the professionals, when they were first doing this, they really liked the Ritchie-Cretian, because the stars were oval shaped, they were astigmatic, they were stretched in in one axis or another. So so more lenses, you you go ahead and do that. But you might be introducing other things with the lens choices. So you've got to add still more to go ahead and get rid of them. But but you you can't get away from like multiple surfaces to go ahead and correct, you know, like the five different types of aberrations.
It's like drugs as you get older. You have to take drugs to counteract the bad effects of the other drugs you're taking.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. The stuff the stuff that's helping with my cholesterol is not that great for my blood pressure. So I have to take multiple ones of those things and that sort of thing.
So it's necessarily just marketing?
It's it's not. They're like, you you do need that. It depends upon on how perfect you do you you want it. And and so I guess you want it as perfect as you can for those rare nights once or twice a year, when when the heavens goes, it it goes perfect on you. And there isn't a cloud in the sky, there's no moon, because it seems to happen that seeing is great around full moon. Really annoying. Uh, and but you get that one or two perfect nights a year, and you want to take advantage of them when you can. And and so that's why you spend the bucks. Okay? Yes, sir?
Um, I don't know, this is your others that are bothering me. You're comparing the parts with fighter pilots, filming UFOs. And there's always sort of the argument that all of them are powerful, aren't they? That, from your knowledge.
I I I I've seen all kinds of UFO pictures. There are obviously lens flare. And you don't need a telescope to do it. You just need a standard um um zoom lens and point it not that far away from the sun. And and you can see internal reflections in there. Now, depending upon what you've got, if you're not used to seeing those or not used to looking at a bright object, like Venus, for instance, uh which gets blamed for an awful lot of UFOs, and rightly so. Uh, but but, you know, so when it's low down on the horizon, it seems to be traveling with you. I had to sit in the back of the car one day, traveling along the floor, one, looking at Venus, and damn, it sure looks like it's following you. And and so this is the exact same same effect. So and so does so, oh my, it's still in the same, it's following me. And 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 enough um police have also reported this, but um but it's Venus. So I don't doubt you can get the same thing with Sirius as well, or Jupiter upon occasion. Yeah? Yeah, that flashing flashing lights. I so so. There's one one quick little story. I I used to make hot air balloons out of dry cleaner bags, right? Because because they're fun to make. And you could go ahead and you put make a frame out of out of straws and put some birthday candles in there. And then you you seal off the top of a of a tall jacket-sized dry cleaner bag. Um, tape it all together, light the candles, hold it down for a bit, and you've got a really nice hot air balloon, and off it goes. Um, these things have been responsible for several UFO flaps that I have personally caused, including one that went past an apartment building, and the report in the Hamilton Spectator at the time said it went by at several hundred miles an hour. So so I so so knowing this, one of the things that that had to happen in nineteen seventy-six or so, um with a friend of mine, we went into into Hamilton and tried to time our launches of these things from Dundurn Castle there. There was a phone booth, so we were able to light these things and and lift them up and off they went. Hopefully, with the wind would carry it out over downtown Hamilton, just as close in Kansas as the Third Kind was letting out. And 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 it did cause all kinds of kerfuffle. But we went running into the local park that was near there, saying, a UFO, a UFO. And people saying, oh, my God. And one girl said, there's a man inside. And I'm saying, where on earth do you get this thing from? And at that point, I lost all confidence in in um, well, did you see it for yourself? It doesn't matter. You can still be wrong, hopelessly truly wrong. Yeah, absolutely. They're worth the paper they're written on. That's them. Anyway, so, sorry for that. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. I had to stop, right? Because I let one out of my townhouse in in Waterloo. And it went up to the building, but it was a little too windy, and it the the wind knocked it on its side, and the hot air spilled out, so so down it came. And then it filled up with hot air again. And so it'd make it a little bit further away from from the townhouse. And it passed on on Albert Street in Waterloo, about six feet above the road in front of a cop car. And at that at that point, we stopped. But I'd already shown all the guys at university at the time how to go ahead and do this. So they'd bring back reports from the, you know, from the Peterborough Examiner, from the New, from from Ottawa Papers, all over southern Ontario of of UFO flaps, as they called, right down to the Cambridge UFO Society, go ahead and and investigating with Geiger counters, where one of my balloons had had gone behind some trees. So it was an awful lot of fun.
So that's why you move?
I'm afraid to do it now. I might take it over the States, and God knows what would happen. All right, well, we'll take a five-minute break. See you back.
Now, nobody can find their uh they can't see my screen. Oh, uh. Yeah. Uh. We shouldn't have done that. We have to stop. As we have a color. Yeah. Let's just share the screen. No? Yeah. All right, so. So, next up is Rick Wager. So, sky this one. Okay, well, we'll start there. Observatory, these things happening around the area or online. The open house is on Saturday. Ty Withers from Queens is going to be talking about big stars. Big stars are very interesting. Back in the early days of the universe, stars were potentially enormous, like hundreds of solar masses, because there was no metals in, it was all hydrogen and helium. And so there was a very low opacity and so you could get very big stars. So this, this should be quite interesting. Also at Queens, two seminars coming up, twenty fifth of October, Karen Lee Waddell. And November, Maximilian Svatlovsky. And topics are to be determined. B A A is an unusual number of events this month. The Deep Sky Section has a webinar on the seventeenth. Their A G M is on the thirtieth. What's interesting about that is it's not just all business. They do actually have, I think about the last two hours, there are a couple of interesting sounding presentations. And then on the eighth of November, they have their Radio Astronomy Group as a Zoom. Then they're going to be talking about binary stars and stellar cannibalism. A V S O on the twenty sixth of October, mapping wide binaries using pulsation timing variations. I think I know what that means. Eleventh of November, they are also having, or well, the seventh to the eleventh, I think or the eighth to the eleventh, they're having their annual meeting. And on Sunday morning, they have their proper general meeting, annual general meeting, business meeting and so forth. If you're interested, it may be available free to non-registants. The registration for their meeting is a hundred and fifty bucks U S to Zoom in, which I think is shocking. Anyway, October hours of darkness, it is getting dark earlier, it's getting much better for the nighttime people anyway. Sun's altitude is decreasing at noon, which is not so good for solar. I was noticing and exulting the other day in the fact that sunrise was after seven o'clock. It's so amazing. Up in the sky tomorrow, first quarter moon. Suchinshan Atlas was in the dawn sky and quite a few of us have tried to look at it. A few of us have managed to image it, some people better than others, because they're doing it from the southern hemisphere. But it's finally moving now into the evening sky and it just rockets. I think I might have a slide of that later. I don't know, because yeah, we don't, I'm sure, it'll probably be visible in binoculars. But you know, it's going around perihelion and stuff and things can change quite dramatically. Full moon on the seventeenth. Uranus meteor shower peaks only three days later, so there's going to be a lot of interference from the Givis moon. Twenty third of October, comet S one Atlas reaches perigee perhaps at about magnitude ten. Twenty fourth, last quarter moon. On the twenty eighth, that Atlas comet will be at perihelion and perhaps at magnitude minus five. Oh, has it? Oh, well. Yeah. It, that may be a good thing for the next little while, because it is in the morning sky low and a lot of times when they break up, they brighten dramatically because they, you know, put off so much gas and dust. But we will have to see. So it's too bad, so sad. Early November, up until our next meeting. New moon on the first, daylight saving time ends on the third. On the fourth, on the fourth, crescent moon in the evening sky will be four degrees below Venus, quite an attractive view. On the fifth of November, the south torrid meteor's peak is a very minor shower, just a few days after new moon though, so that might be good. First quarter moon on the ninth. Saturn is just ten arc minutes from the limb of the moon on the tenth of November, so that'll be quite attractive. On the eleventh, a challenge observation, the moon will occult Neptune, quite visible from here. So Neptune is very faint, relatively faint, small and low surface brightness, so I'm not sure. Now it is getting occulted at the dark limb, so that would make it easier. And twelfth, the north torrid meteor shower peaks. Major planets, Mercury sort of mid-month is very low in the evening sky. Venus also very low in the evening sky right now. The ecliptic is very low angle, so everything sort of hangs along the horizon. Saturn has passed opposition, so it's up all night, transits something like ten thirty or so. So. Probably, yeah, so it's Givis. Neptune is up all night, transits just before midnight, should be at opposition soon. Uranus rises in the early evening and transits well before dawn. Jupiter rises early evening, transits well before morning twilight, so it's up high, high in the skies, quite a neat, nice altitude, if you're up at sort of three or four o'clock in the morning. And Mars is still struggling to come back from conjunction with the sun, is up shortly before midnight, transits about sunrise. Small bodies on the seventeenth of October, nineteen Fortuna is at opposition. And on the thirteenth of November, eleven Parthenope.
And on the thirteenth of November, eleven Parthenope.
And then the two comets.
And then the two comets.
So I don't know how well you can see this, but I'll do it on this one. So this is the morning sky, just sort of nautical twilight kind of thing. No, this is evening sky, nautical twilight and Boaties, Libra, Serpent's Caplet and stuff. And you can see Suchinshan Atlas, it's just honking across the sky there, getting fainter all the time. I think it's like supposed to be fifth magnitude or something as it gets in there. So definitely worth, worth looking for. S one Atlas does this, starting out at thirteen, fourteenth magnitude and whatever's left of it moves in. And it's unfortunate we're going to miss this, because it was like predicted to be like fifth magnitude one day, minus five the next day, fifth magnitude the day after that. It's going in that two day period, it's gone all the way around the sun and come back out the other side and then curls around. So I have to see, I mean, I've, I've been trying to photograph it every morning and I have not yet successfully. Well, no, no, I, I mean, I'm doing it now while it's, yeah. Well, the only hope would be is that if it was a true, like great comet, is that, you know, it may have like a sixty or ninety degree tail that would be rising well, well before sunrise. Yeah, that would be, but that's. Canyon? That'd be good to watch. I mean, then you're looking at, I mean, at somebody else's pictures and stuff. It's not the same. We have two asteroid occultations to talk about. Eight three eight Seraphina, fifteen point two magnitude is going to occult an eleven point nine magnitude star for up to four seconds. So this is the central line here. Goes over Cardinal, just north of Kingston, so Battersea and Centerville in all kinds of places are in the path. I'm not sure what the orange line means. And that one is on the fourteenth of October and then on the fourth of November, this one goes at a rather odd angle, unusual. And I think the only person likely to see it here is, is Battersea. Eleven point seven magnitude. Yeah. I think I've got these magnitudes backwards. I think the asteroid is eighteen point seven and the star is eleven point seven, so six point nine magnitude drop. And again, you know, it's the small ones, you get a one point one second occultation. That's all, any questions? Back to you, Rick. Thanks, Rick. Yes. Yeah? Two fifty eight universal time. So yes, that will actually be on the thirteenth, so, yeah. Yeah, well, that's why it says U T, so. If, if it says U T, then I can not be, sir. Yeah. So now try, see if we can get back to the other one? Has it gone away? I don't think there's anything in the other presentation anyway. Probably can't. Are we sharing this? Okay. So you want to go to spaceweather.com? Well, this, the, the little ring here is the sun. So Mercury, so this would still be sort of in the morning sky. I would assume that's an ante tail unless. Yes, I think it might be blooming, because Mercury has the same spikes that way, which means this thing is brighter than Mercury. Oh. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. That one? This is, this is over ten hours. Bright, fast-moving CME heading directly toward Earth. Late on October tenth. I mean, just look at the. I was wondering about that, is it worth taking, like you see something coming, put everything in a metal box and be the only person on Earth with a computer? Get on the internet then. No, you can't just turn it off. I don't believe it. No, I don't think so. If you get a, a massive Carrington event, it's the Earth's magnetic field that pushes through, moves through the current, through the, I mean, it's mostly through, through long distance lines. So if you unplug everything, yeah, you're probably all right. Yeah. There we can look at it bigger. That's probably naked eye. Yeah, this would, I don't know what. Yeah, I don't know what time it would have been, but anyway. Okay, so people with observations. Stefan Julain too. Oh, okay. Come on, media player. Duh. Get rid of this thing, you know? It has music. Okay. Wow.
That's around one, one hundred. That's just the stock cannon, eighteen fifty-five, man.
Where did you put your?
So this is going to be necessary, because I don't remember what I put in here.
You want the mic?
Yep. Okay, so what do we have here? We have a picture of Jupiter. And this is the animation from, if I can read the date, September twentieth. And so I take imaging runs of three minutes each, and then I blast as long as I can. If it's work night, it's not very long, and this is in the morning though, so. Depends how early up in the, in the morning I can get. And then I put them all together in a nice animation. Unfortunately, the animations are so huge, they can't go into email, and they just rarely get onto a website. Okay, how do we make it go to the next picture? I would have to redefine French, which I can't, but it is on, online with the description of what it is. Okay, so I don't know how to make it go to the next picture? Go down. Right? Okay, see, it doesn't appear until you're there, which I hate about user interfaces. Nothing happened. Okay, and why is that so big now? But I didn't zoom in. But I didn't. Oh, here we go. Okay, so another moon, probably, did I say what it is? Not on this image, a great red spot. And you can see the artifacts of processing. That, right around the bright spot, there's a big dark hole around Jupiter, and that's just the processing artifacts of modern-day stacking and aligning and wavelengths. Oh, yes, absolutely, yeah, shrinking and getting lower contrast. So, one of the things that we wanted to show here is that we have an all. We have an all-sky camera that is not all-sky, so we've recently renamed it to Aurora Cam. And a couple of notes for people is that you can see it on the center website. And then, why does this not go to where you want it to go to? On the miss, on the landing page, there's an image that updates about every hour or so. So if you're ever wondering what's going on in the world in the, in the sky, you can see we've repurposed it to be an Aurora camera, because the all-sky isn't working, and we don't have the resources to make it an all-sky camera. So either a much bigger, more expensive camera, or a bigger wider-angle lens, which we used to have one. And while we're here, also on the webpage, on the left-hand side, is Rick's What's Up in the Sky Happenings, if you remember those. So, we have an all-sky camera, and it was physically mounted to a post with a metal band to keep it in place. And that was not great for. Microsoft, I just want to blow up, I'll tell you, oh, sorry, we're recording this. Microsoft is my friend, hi, Microsoft. You can't aim it, it's roughly pointed north, it moves around a bit, and there are other issues with it. And then I thought, well, if I want to turn this into Aurora Cam, I want to aim it to the north. And to do that, you have to be able to point your, your instrumentation to your camera. So I thought, you know, maybe an Altaz mount would be a really good idea to, to build. And so the idea came forward to get a couple of pieces of wood. Oh my goodness. Let's blow this up a little bit. Couple of pieces of wood and a two-by-three, and let's make an Altaz mount. And you can do this for all kinds of stuff. That was the original setup, and just for reference, there's an ethernet cable that goes up to a Raspberry Pi inside, and an ASI 290 MC camera up there. There's a power cable that runs up to a resistive heater to help create heat for the dome, so it doesn't condense up. And then in the hot days of the summer, the camera temperature sensor would go over fifty degrees Celsius. So I had to get some cool air in there, so there's a little computer microfan inside this panel that goes up in this tube. And the tube comes up right about here to blow cold air out of the bottom and pop up here and try to make it cooler. And it didn't work either. So, Altaz platform, you start with the base, nail it into the four-by-four post, put a little bolt sticking up out of it. Add another piece, a bolt, so you can turn it, and a wingnut to lock it down in place. A little two-by-three also screwed into that top portion with a little carriage bolt on the side as well. And a hole drilled into the housing to mount that, and a little wingnut again. So now you can aim it exactly where you want to and point it. And we pointed it down towards the northern hemisphere, northern, northern hemisphere, northern horizon, to try and turn it into an Aurora camera. And that's what it looks like, and operated and set up now. And luckily, this was on September twenty-second, so before all of this good stuff came along. And there is a sample image from Monday night. Monday night? Yes, Monday night at about ten-thirty local time. North is up. Why is that? I'm totally, totally missing the point. North is up. The northern, the northern horizon is up. This is the camera looking at stuff, and this is the image you get. Okay, I see your point, I didn't see his point. Okay, let's try that. Who can read the animations now? Okay. That may not be a bad idea, but I prefer it the other way. Yeah, yeah, well, that's what, yeah. I can flip it in software as well, yeah. Okay. And lastly, here somewhere, I think we have the video of all of this. And I don't see it. I guess it didn't get included on this. Be that so sad, okay, maybe next time. That's it, you're up, Rick. It's too big. It's, it's tens and tens and tens of megabytes. Saturn passed it probably a month ago or so, and the rings getting so thin, I can barely make them out anymore. It's going to be several months before actual, this level is that. Unfortunately, Saturn is not my on-time of day to take images and go to work still, so. You can't say that, I gotta be in bed by eight PM, because, you know, that's, that's the nature of work.
Because he's an old man.
Yeah, eighty-seven, I think now, yeah, we're counting now. Okay, you're good.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to bring up, any other observations? Guess not. Okay, check out our website. Kevin just gave us a brief tour. We have a Facebook group, a YouTube channel. I think everybody here is a member. If not, you can join it. The RASC National Website. Next meeting, November thirteenth, seven PM, right here. We do have a speaker, don't we? I can't remember. Anyway, I think there's a speaker, there's also the AGM, the, that's not an excuse to not come. If you don't come, you'll be volunteered and elected for something awful. All right? Yes. So, if there's nothing further, I declare the meeting closed. Thank you for being here.